Hi, good evening. And I welcome you all to this regular meeting of the Bryan City Board of Education on February 10th, 2020. We'd like to welcome some special guests this evening, who we'll hear from later. Middle School Gifted Program led by Mrs. Betsy Zuber. And also, I understand leadership of this county members are here tonight, so special welcome to them as well. If you'd please join me with a question.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, if we could have the roll call.
Scott?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Dustin? Mike?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, in our information, it came electronically, we received the January minutes from our organizational meeting, our regular meeting, as well as special meetings. If you had a chance to look those over, were there?
It came to our attention, the minutes for the special meeting were not actually included in the information sent to you electronically, so we have them here on the board for you to look at.
All right.
It's on there now, though, right?
Yeah, it's there now.
Right.
Are there any additions or corrections to be noted? Hearing done, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Hi, thank you. Second, Scott.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that brings us to public participation, not knowing if any this evening. We'll move along to communications. And tonight's student spotlight will let Mrs. Betsy Zuber begin. Hello. Hello. First of all, wow, I got the three, two, nine, four, three, two, want to get set up. I'm Mrs. Betsy Zuber, and I've been teaching here at Bryan City Schools for 24 years now. And this is the first time that I have been given the opportunity to teach a class for purely gifted, identified students. So first of all, I want to thank the board and Mrs. Savage and our administration for that. We are moving in the right direction and serving our students who are identified as gifted in this seventh and eighth grade class. So we want to get our thanks out of the way, and then I'll let the kids introduce themselves, tell you their name and their grade level.
I'm Hunter Kinsman, and I'm in seventh grade.
Griffin Davis, eighth grade.
Ella Raskis, eighth grade.
Macy Shit, seventh grade.
We have 25 students in the class of combined seventh and eighth graders. And so these are my four wonderful volunteers that came with us tonight. Wanted to tell you a little bit about our class. As I said, all gifted, identified, it can be anything, social studies, superior cognitive, science, math, language arts, writing. And the way we decided to design the class is a passion project. There is a nationally recognized program called Genius Hour that's been around for quite some time, and I took quite a bit of their curriculum and their philosophy about gifted children wanting to delve deeper into specific subjects and have the time to take a learning path and see where it goes. And so that's really what this class is all about, is a passion project. So we took about five weeks of the beginning of the year, and we didn't think it was that we would need that long, but we did, didn't we Hunter? We took, we had interest inventories and passion inventories and personality inventories, and we did all kinds of things to just make sure that we were picking the passion that absolutely was going to carry us through the rest of the year. And so the only added piece to the passion project, they can research whatever excites them. The only requirement other than that is that you have to do something that serves someone else with it. You have to make something that helps somebody else. And so that's where we are. Right now in the class, the kids are in research mode and helping each other problem solve, giving each other feedback. We have some kids that are already helping others. And so I'll let them tell you real briefly about just a little summary of their projects.
I'm making prosthetic robotic arms for people, and also if they have paralysis, it will be able to make them move by voice.
I've started looking at a proposal for starting a new music club that will travel to different retirement homes and play for the senior citizens.
I have made a program called Special Sports with another seventh grade student, and we're teaching special needs kids how to play sports every Tuesday.
I'm currently researching about finance, and by the end of the year, I'm thinking about making a pamphlet. And I'm also working with four other seventh grade students on a project called Jekyll Fruit. We make and sell items, and the profits will go and donate to other people in need.
I should say that Ella is playing, she's kind of double dipping tonight. She is our team Miss Bryan, and she is, right?
Yes.
Yes. She is, make sure I get that right. So she gets some community service hours for doing things like this. So she's helping us in our class, and she's representing Bryan. And so that's why she has her sash on tonight. So you can see a few other of our projects, it's not all 25. But we have someone writing a play, we have someone writing a novel, we have one young man who's the most passionate I've ever seen about botany, loves plants, and he's going to make a terrarium slash aquarium for hermit crabs. We've got someone really interested in Tesla coils. A young lady teaching herself sign language, you name it, it's all over the place. And it's so exciting to see these kids passionate about what they're learning. Just last week, things happened kind of organically. I was real upset that I had to throw an expo marker away. And so we did a little bit better research, and we found a Crayola color cycle program that we're going to try to get off the ground here before the year is over. If you send in boxes of markers, any marker, to Crayola, 10-pound box at a time, they will pay for the shipping, and they will recycle, and they turn it into fuel. We watched the video, what kind of fuel was it? I forget. Do you remember? Some type of petrol fuel or something?
Yeah, a little petrol fuel.
Yeah. So that was really exciting. We learned something, and we're going to collectively, we were planning on it, but all 25 of us are going to work with the elementary and our Bryan Middle High School to get a recycling program for these markers, so you're not just throwing away that plastic. So we're excited about that. Hunter, what do you want to tell a little bit about the speakers that we've had in?
We've had many people coming around our town. They're passionate in what they screwed up in their life, kind of. They didn't follow their passions. But we've had all sorts of people, like a military veteran, author, tourist, mayor, former FBI agent, crafter, and more. And some of them that will soon be coming as her father, who will bring in also 3D printers to help with some of our projects, and authors, which helps with a lot of things.
That's another factor of our class. We've had, what was it, six or seven guest speakers already, and I have about eight or nine more lined up. Emily Eschoven is coming in a week or two to talk about following her passion of dance. Every Wednesday, we have activities to exercise our brains, creative thinking and problem solving. This is just a really energetic, fun, exciting group of kids. Got a couple quotes from them. We don't need to read them necessarily, but some kids talked a little bit about what they enjoyed about the class. You can take a look there. Anything I'm forgetting to say, guys? Anything else that you want to offer? Is it your favorite part of the day? No, I'm not paying them to say that. I do have some help, I have a student intern through another wonderful program in our city schools where juniors and seniors get to intern with teachers and other, and people in the community. I'm sure a lot of you know about our senior intern program. So Erica Graham, wanted to mention, she couldn't come tonight, but she's my senior intern, and we love her, too. She's a wonderful addition to our, to our exciting, passionate learning experience. So thank you so much for letting us come in tonight and tell you about this. And thank you, Board of Education, for approving this class, where it's been a wonderful experience. Any questions? So they're with you one period a day, is that correct? Mm-hmm. Each day, five days a week? Correct. And it'll be continuing on then? Every other year, since it's, that is the plan, as far as I know. Since it's a seventh and eighth, we'll split, yeah. Come back, okay. Right, it is seventh and eighth combined right now. So I'm open to anything. It's been really fun, it's a lot, but it's been really fun. Sounds like there's a lot for you to do to create and research the best foot, so. Yes, yes. It's not a box you pull off the shop? No, 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 no. But it is student-led, the research, their research is student-led. When they get, the young man with the Tesla coil, when he gets stuck, I ask other kids to help. You know, that's not my area of expertise, but we figure it out together, so it's been fun. We do have an Instagram page before we go. One of our young ladies is passionate about photography, so she got the approval to start an Instagram. And so if you'd like to follow us, it's called One Class, that was the name we decided on on about week four or five, not just gifted enrichment, but that one class. And so we do have an Instagram page, then you can see what adventures we're up to and what we're learning. Any other questions? Thanks so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Another item under Communications is our report from Four County Career Center.
Yes, we have our Four County rep, Mrs. Keeler, could not be here tonight, but she's sent in her report. On February 19th, they will host grandparents and parents' visitation day. And then also, so the community is aware, on March 17th through the 20th, the Cosmetology Salon will be hosting their 2020 Spa Days. Patrons are invited to indulge themselves and enjoy the day with complete makeovers, coffee, tea, orange juice, and a healthy lunch. Patrons will enjoy a therapy facial massage, or facial manicure with warm wax treatment, an OPI manicure with warm wax treatment, and a Paul Mitchell Wash House experience in style. And you can call the number at Four County, deadline for registration is March 9th. So the community is invited to participate in that wonderful day.
Thank you, and thanks, Sandra, for submitting to us. We'll move along to the Treasurers' Report and Recommendations, Kevin.
Thank you. So we'll start with the cash reconciliation. As of January 31st, 2020, at Farmers and Merchants, $1,506,456.20. Total adjustments amounting to $90,198.10. Investments at Star Ohio, $434,838.21. Star Ohio Plus, $2,494,361.14. State Bank, $6,454,317.24. UBS Financial, $4,364,211.50. For a total investments of $13,747,728.90. Petty cash and change funds amount to $7,400 for a total fund balance of $15,171,386.28. Funds of note, the general fund balance is $11,371,943.18. And the permanent improvement fund, $1,511,336.49. In addition to that, the customary financial reports were included in your packet. Were there any questions on any of those reports? Okay. Moving on to my financial recommendations, the first two items, the MBEC and Nwaka Internet Service Agreement for both St. Patrick's and Fountain City Christian. Because they use our fiber connection to Nwaka, we are part to these agreements, but there's no financial obligation on our part to them. Then the next item is Julian and Groob Medicaid Accretive Pond Procedures. Each year, Julian and Groob look at our Medicaid items before we send them in for final reimbursement. We've used this company for several years, and this agreement is a new two-year agreement. amended appropriations for fiscal year 2020, have a few items in there. It's a net increase of $56,167.38 across all funds. Nothing of any particular note, a lot of these have to do with funds that we've received during the year and increasing appropriations to spend those new incoming funds. Any particular questions on appropriations? Moving on, return of advance to the general fund from the Food Service Fund. Back in early fiscal 2020, we had advanced $15,000 to the cafeteria fund, and it is now sitting at about $45,000, $60,000 in that neighborhood, and so they're ready to return those funds to the general fund. We are not sure at this point whether there will need to be a final transfer towards the end of the year, but we'll know that round about the end of May. And then finally, the resolution accepting the amounts and rates is determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is a resolution that the county auditor prepares for us to raise the statutory amounts required by the levies that we have passed in the past. And none of this is anything that we have particularly set, we're just accepting that the county auditor has set these at the correct rates. Then we would like to recognize the following donations. $100 from the Newland Quest for National Honor Society, $275 from the Bryan Civic League for Youth and Government, $3,000 from Bryan Athletic Boosters for cross-country, $2,000 from the Bryan Athletic Boosters for girls soccer, $500 from the Academic Booster Club for Youth and Government, $120 from the Academic Booster Club for field trip, $162 from the Academic Booster Club for t-shirts, and three Ohio flags from the PHS class of 1964.
Any questions? Not hearing any, yeah, accept a motion.
So moved.
To approve, okay. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Ben?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Old business would be next on our agenda.
I'm not aware of any old business at this time. New business items? Mr. Ray, we'd like to ask you to step up at this time and talk a little bit about graduation seals.
Yeah. So you may have a copy of this, if not, here's another one, pass down, I'll pass it your way. But you, in the recent years, the High Department of Education has given us a lot of graduation options that the students were supposed to follow, or graduation requirements, I should say, and they were supposed to follow. And this changed multiple times over the last five years specifically. But they have recently come out with what they are calling now their permanent graduation requirements, which are going to take effect with the class of 2023, which is this year's current freshman. So right now in our building, we have our class of 2020, our current seniors following a specific set of graduation requirements. We have our classes of 21 and 22, so our juniors and sophomores, following a blended set of what we currently have in place and what the new model is. And then our current freshmen are supposed to follow the new model or the permanent requirements. So the permanent requirements still have students taking end-of-course exams and end-of-course tests. There are six total tests that students can take and earn points towards graduation. But on top of that, they are requiring that students earn two, what they're calling diploma seals. And there's a total of 12 different seals that a student can obtain. Of the 12, I'll just rattle off a few here. The seals include names like a citizenship seal, a science seal, an honor of diploma seal, a technology seal. And then they also have local requirements or seals that can be locally governed. So what I'm here to talk to you about tonight is, we've sat down as an administrative team and with our guidance staff, and started to put together what we would like to see our locally-defined seals turn out to be for our students to then utilize. We would anticipate there'd be a good third of our students that may use these locally-defined seals. So the state has come out and said that there's three locally-defined seals. There are the Community Service Seal, the Fine and Performing Arts Seal, and the Certified Student Engagement Seal. So just briefly to recap each of those, with the Community Service Seal, the state requirement is that a student complete a community service project aligned with the guidelines adopted by the student's local Board of Education or school governing authority. So what we have taken that very general verbiage and language to say is that if a student wishes to obtain the Community Service Seal, that they must complete 20 hours of community service, and then they must submit a service project overview stating how they serve the community. And there would be requirements in there to outline the description of their service project, how they completed it, when they did it, the purpose of the project, et cetera, and then of course, obtain a signature to verify their hours of service. For the Fine and Performing Arts Seal, the state says that the student must demonstrate a skill in the fine or performing arts according to an evaluation aligned with guidelines adopted by the student's local Board of Education. So we looked at that and said to ourselves, we have a lot of fantastic opportunities for our students to participate in a fine or performing arts program. So our take on that would be for the student to participate in one of our programs to their full extent, so from start to finish, and including all the attendance requirements, all the practice requirements, all the participation requirements. And if they do that, and if it's also a co-curricular, such as orchestra or band, meet appropriate grading guidelines and pass the course. The student will then be evaluated by their advisor or by their teacher, and they'll be able to obtain that seal. And then the third seal, that's locally-defined, is the Student Engagement Seal. The state language to outline this seal says the student must participate in extracurricular activities such as athletics, clubs, or student government to a meaningful extent as determined by guidelines adopted by the local Board of Education. So again, we have an abundance of extracurricular activities for our students, not only on the athletic front, but in clubs that we have available to our students and different activities. So much like the Fine and Performing Arts Seal, this seal would dictate that the student must participate in a club or extracurricular activity to their full extent, meaning the full participation requirements, participating in them from start to finish, in good standing, and then they would be able to be awarded the seal. So this is a draft that you can take time to look at, we don't have to take any action on this tonight. Again, it is an option that is available for the class of 20, as we currently stand. However, there's a lot of moving parts with these new graduation requirements. So we are comfortable in saying we would like these ready and available for our students in the classes of 21, 22, and then of course, 23. So we're trying to get ahead of the curve and get these in place so that we can communicate to our families the options that they have to meet the graduation requirements.
So each of these are to be completed within one school year?
So it's along their, it's along their educational journey from their, from their high school years through graduation.
So something they could choose to begin working on as freshmen?
Correct.
Potentially?
Yep.
So they could earn any number of seals, potentially, depending upon what they wanted to put forward?
Yeah, of the 12 seals, some of them will naturally, they'll naturally obtain them through, for example, passing state tests in the Community Citizenship Seal. So they'll naturally, as long as they're passing and following all the protocols they need to follow, they'll obtain those. But if they're not able to obtain those state dictated seals, they have these locally-defined ones and options.
Thank you for your work and those who are working on that.
Thanks, Mark. Any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, appreciate your work and time and efforts into putting that together.
All right, now here are the superintendent's recommendations.
Okay, thank you. So under administrative recommendations, first of all, we have approval of the following students who have met all the graduation requirements for Bryan City Schools and the state of Ohio at this time with the class of 2020. Michaela Douglas, Paige Flynn, Jacob Gilbert, Bryant Horn, Chloe Knott, Jade Kurth, Cody Lambert, Morgan McClure, Gabriel Mendez. So we congratulate them on their accomplishment and wish them the best of luck in their next step in their journey. We also have, which is an annual action, membership into the OHSAA for the 2020-21 school year. And then finally, we have the approval of the eighth-grade trip itinerary to Chicago, which was included in your packet. We also have our student commendations for our All-A Honor Roll listed for our high school students. We want to congratulate our representatives at the Middle School Spelling Bee, Disney Abell, and runner-up Josie Arnold. And we also want to thank, and I'm sure we'll hear more about, our Dance Gold supporters and congratulate them on their donation to United Way. And we had our OMEA All-State Choir participants, Ariana Penny and Katie Davis. And at the Pre-K to 5 Building, our Gold Slip winners for January, and our PBIS Sportsmanship winners for January, Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Houck's classrooms. So are there any questions on those recommendations?
Hearing done, now accept a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations. Scott? Thank you, Mike?
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Under personnel recommendations, we have a transfer of classified staff, Amanda Siders, to our open position of health aide at 5.75 hours per day, and that was effective today. With an involuntary transfer of classified staff, Candy Schaefer, one-on-one preschool aide. She is SS certified at 4.5 hours per day, Tuesday through Friday, that was effective January 17th. Sherry Robinson to library lunch recess aide, 4.75 hours per day, that was effective January 21st. And Taryn Walz, sensory aide, 5.75 hours per day, effective January 27th. We have some certified substitutes, some recent graduates in December, which we're thankful to have, as well as some new classified substitutes. We also celebrate the fact that we have a new bus driver for hire. Thomas Apple is coming on with zero years' experience, and that will be effective February 18th. We have a non-renewal of classified substitutes. Melissa has accepted a full-time job at another location. And a salary schedule placement with Caleb Beatty, moving to her master's degree salary schedule effective January 1st of 2020. And then finally, in Exhibit L, we have our approval of the remaining spring coaches. Do we have that?
We had it, yes.
Yeah, it's on there.
It's on there? Let me just click on the exhibit.
Yeah.
There we go. Did a little shortcut. So we have the final listing of our spring coaches for baseball, softball, track, tennis, and then our athletic volunteers for the spring as well. Are there any questions regarding those?
Okay, hearing done, I'll accept a motion for those to be accepted and approved.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott?
Scott?
Mike?
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under points of information, our board meeting dates, we have our special Board of Education meeting on February 13th, which is this Thursday. That is a work session for the board, which begins at 5:30. Our next regular Board of Education meeting will be March 16th at 7:00 PM. Our Business Advisory Committee will meet April 15th, and that's at 7:00 AM here in the boardroom. And reports from administrators, Mr. Bassett was not able to be here with us, but he sent his report. He wanted to let the board members know that we now have access to what's called a language line. So if we have an IEP meeting or a parent meeting, and the parents do not speak English, we have access to an interpreter that we can stream through, it's a live person, kind of like a go-to meeting, to get help with that. And then also with our English nons, non-English speaking students, we have the OALPA testing, which should be finished this week, and then we'll head into our alternate assessment testing. And our Language Arts Committee has been working very diligently to review new materials for our reading and language arts instruction in grades K to 5. And so we've taken a look, and we have it narrowed down to about four different programs, which are Um and so we've taken a look and we have it narrowed down to about four different programs, which our teachers are currently reviewing. So again, he apologizes, but wanted to support the seventh grade team and his son in their quest for a championship. And now we'll turn it over to Mr. Savage. No, didn't happen.
Last update, they were down in the fourth quarter.
Okay.
Spoiler. They were the
Spoiler alert.
They were the fifth, they were the fifth seed and knocked off number one along the way, so they did, they did really well. Uh winter sports are coming to, coming to an end here. We have, we're in our last, last part of our regular season and will enter into our tournament play. Um our basketball teams, the boys varsity team is currently fourteen and five overall, and three and two in the league. They will e- enter the sectional tournament and they will play Saint Mary's at the end of February. The girls varsity team is currently fifteen and five overall. They're four and two in league play. They will, they will play Wasean uh at the end of February for their sectional tournament game. Seventh grade boys, like we just talked about, they played in the championship today at Patrick Henry, and they lost a close game to to Patrick Henry. Um the eighth grade girls will play tomorrow in the championship at Patrick Henry against Liberty Center. This should be a really good game. They, I think they won last time by one point, thirty-three or thirty-two. So again, it should be uh a really good game over there. Our bowling teams continued their their excellence. Both boys and girls were NWOYL champions this past Saturday at the Boyan. We had the individual boy and girl tournament winner in Wade Alport in Jadesley. We also had the individual boy and girl that were bowlers of the year in the Mead siblings, Matthew Mead, a sophomore, and Emma Mead, a senior. They were named bowlers of the year based on their average. Um sectionals begin this Friday for them, February fourteenth at, once again, at the Point. And our swim and dive teams, they have, there's fourteen district qualifiers for swim that will compete on Friday at BGSU. We have four divers that will compete at BGSU on Wednesday. Wrestling team, their league meet will be in Archibald on February twenty-second. Some other key events that we have, we're going to be hosting uh OHSAA tournament games again this year. Uh Division Four, the girls on February eighteenth and the twenty-second, and the boys on February twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty, I think it should be the twenty-eighth, it should be twenty-eighth. Um so key dates down the road here, we have our spring signing date on Wednesday, April twenty-second. We currently have four uh individuals that will be declaring that they're going to participate at the next level while they pursue their uh their undergraduate degree. Um and those are in addition to the five we had in the fall, so that then that'll make nine so far out of the senior class. Um our Brian Athletic Department quarter auction fundraiser is April twenty-fifth at the, at the Brian Eagles, and that's an event we've been planning for a couple of months now, and that that will take place to get, once again, um at the Eagles. And finally, our NWOYL underclass leadership conference will be uh Monday, May eleventh, and we're going to focus on um freshmen sophomores this time as we, as we head over to Saunders Heritage Gym in the gathering room. It's put them through a leadership conference with the seven other NWOYL schools. We we did, we went for the, the seniors in the fall and it worked out really well. We're going to focus on the underclass when this coming May. So questions for me?
Okay, Mrs. Cox.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. Um at the elementary, we had our first annual lunch and learn. We had a couple of community members, a couple of parents come in. We gave them a guided tour, walked into some classrooms, um looked at some of our technology, and then sat down with them to answer questions that they would have about Bryan Elementary. Um we hope to do it again, uh maybe in the spring sometime. So still an option if people um would still like to do that. We currently have a hundred and seventy-five students signed up for our dental outreach program. You've seen the nice colorful van that's out in front of the elementary school. So a hundred and seventy-five have signed up and about half have gone through the program. Um that's when, where students are getting exams, teeth cleanings, and fluoride treatments. So parents greatly appreciate that opportunity um of that. On February twentieth, we have our second annual literacy night for our um one-school, one-book. So it is a free event. We open it up um to our community families. Um most of the evening will focus around um Tales of the Fourth Grade Nothing, which is the book that we're doing. Um we've heard a lot of positives um regarding, regarding the book. That'll be held at the elementary, I believe, five-thirty to seven. What's the time there? Um February twenty-first is the end of the second trimester for Bryan Elementary, where port cards will go home uh February twenty-eighth. And then we have, I know Mrs. Savage talked about um some testing there, we have our alternative STAR assessment, which is another way that students can pass the third grade reading guarantee, and that is on February twenty-seventh. Um looking ahead, we have our big grandparents' day on Wednesday, March eighteenth. That's a big hit. Um those times, it'll be so very similar to last year, and the times will be shared um here shortly in the next couple of days. And then as we look farther ahead, we have our Bryan Elementary Art Show at the Williams County Public Library um starting Wednesday, March eighteenth, and it'll, it'll go um for a couple of weeks. And um one piece of student work from kindergarten through fifth grade is displayed um in that, in that elementary um downstairs part of the library, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Rary, we'll bring you up again.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm gonna put a little something on the interactive panel here. Just wanted to open up with, and we have some members that participated here. We held our first ever Dance Gold event on Saturday, February first, and Mr. Savage was a big part in planning and making sure that the night could happen. Just to kind of sum it up, what Dance Gold was, we explained it briefly um a while back, but Bryan High School was looking for a way to generate, wanted to give back to the community. Uh we are many times a recipient of so many um donors and gracious gifts, uh but this was an opportunity for high school students to give back to an organization. And this year, well, every year, we're trying to find a different organization, but this year, we are very fortunate to partner with the United Way. So a big thank you to Chastity and her staff for um helping out with the night and being gracious to uh receive our gift and work with us on the whole process. But all in all, the goal was for our students to raise funds to give back to the organization so they can use it as they fit. And the reward for raising those funds was to have just a pure night of fun, and that's what Dance Gold is, just a pure night of fun. So it was food, it was dancing, it was glow-in-the-dark wiffle ball, glow-in-the-dark capture-the-flag, laser tag, cornhole, can jam, spike ball, uh volleyball, badminton. Um the whole idea, all these students were placed on teams, mixed with grade levels, freshmen through seniors, and they were placed on teams and they had to go accumulate points based on all the games that they played and then bring it back. But so like two or three teammates were playing volleyball, while two or three were playing badminton, and two or three were playing laser tag. They all wanted to win so their team could end up gathering the most points and have the total. So we actually had to settle it through some dodgeball and some tug-of-war. It was phenomenal, but um words can't do it justice. It was just a, the high that you got off of that event
Four hours, yeah.
and the positivity. I mean, you could ride for six months off of that, and it was just phenomenal. Kids were excited. Kids made it happen. Like I said, we had awesome partners with the United Way, so. Um there's a highlight video that one of our students, Parker Rosebrook, made.
Parker.
He he made it on the spot.
And released that night.
And before I even play, Stephanie Ponzek was the organizer. I mean, from start to finish of this entire event, it made it happen, and it was just um phenomenal. But uh this is three minutes. I'll play the first. I might need to do the sound on the, I'm gonna hop over here and see if this is turned up. If I can remove it out here.
Go down to your little speaker.
Where's that here?
Yeah, Megly's gonna help you.
Yeah, you got the Megly.
Oh, there you go.
It's down here somewhere. Gotta be smarter than the board, I guess. Mrs. Cox, do you know?
Is the sound on your laptop turned up, Mr. Rary?
Well, maybe a staff who with the video there, but um
You're working on it, I think.
You can see, it's just, he's got some awesome music to go with it, but there's dancing. Um like I just said, it's, it's just a to- I'll just let that play while we talk. But it it was phenomenal, so um kudos to our students. Uh we had many parent volunteers, other administrators and staff, and helped out as well, so it was just a phenomenal night with a lot of fun um taking place. So that was the first, which we hope is the first annual, and we'd like to continue to move forward with it and find a way to give back to the community every year. So very exciting. But uh while I was playing here, I'll just give a few other updates. Um at our levels, grade six through twelve, our juniors have their ACT testing coming up here uh at the end of the month, February twenty-fifth. It's a Tuesday, it's a state mandate. They'll take the ACT to see if they can get a reme- remediation-free score, which can help um count towards a diploma-earning um piece toward, towards graduation if they score appropriately, or it's just a, a simple practice to help them if they're choosing to to use that score to move on um to the next level um with their academics. Uh we have some upcoming concerts, so we actually just hosted solo and ensemble. And a big thank you to the staff and the parents and all of our participants uh for doing an amazing job at that event this past weekend and and hosting that, which is great. And uh I know the kids always put in a ton of effort at times, so um they uh deserve the the rewards that they get. But upcoming here, we have band uh Tuesday, the eleventh, that's tomorrow, from, uh that's grades five to eight. So it's taking place tomorrow night, and then the high school band concert is Sunday, March eighth. Choir has a concert coming up on Sunday, March first for grades six through twelve. And then orchestra performs at the state level in their state contest coming up here at the end of the month on Friday, February twenty-eighth. And then they are also hosting their grades five through twelve concert on Sunday, February twenty-third. So they have a busy season that they're entering here. Actually, some more exciting news to pass along, so we made, we made the change to implement personal finance as a graduation requirement, starting with the class of uh two thousand and twenty-four and beyond as they come in. Um in part with that, um Nathan Keel, our business teacher, personal finance teacher, and myself uh came across a grant that could help provide money to supplement that curriculum. And lo and behold, we ended up winning the grant, so we are receiving um ten thousand dollars to help supplement that curriculum and jumpstart the personal finance graduation requirement. So we're excited to have that um come our way, and I think we're supposed to get some materials, and I think even the finances themselves are coming this week, so we can start to use that appropriately as we see fit for that curriculum. So we're excited for that.
Awesome, thank you.
Nice.
One last plug I'll put out there, we have a potential date of May eighteenth. We'll see how, if we need to change it, but for our annual CEO Day. And that's an event where we invite, we're trying to get twenty-five to thirty business representatives into the building to put our seniors through a mock interview process. Uh we set the day um before their Bryan Area Foundation Scholarship interviews. They get some practice and they get um very valuable feedback. And each year, it is um very uh very liked by the students and actually adults as well, get a, get a great experience out of it, so we're looking forward to that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, the sound was off there.
But we can highlight that there is our very own Bryan C. Schools YouTube channel. So any of these videos, if you go out to YouTube, we have alumni highlights, we have VCT production. So you can check out our YouTube channel, and there's, all the videos are there.
All right, very good. Um we do have uh the recent go into an executive session this evening um for the purpose of employment, discipline, compensation of an employer official, as well as matters that are required to be kept confidential by federal law, and those are state statutes. So that will uh be what we do next. We do anticipate there may be one action when we come out. However, it will be under E, which will be confidential um by law. And uh we're happy to share that information after, or you can stay, either way, so. Do I have a motion for another executive session? Oh, yes, we better do that.
No, no.
No, no.
Executive session.
Executive session first.
You'll do that, Scott? Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, thank you.